Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin with the moment of prayer.
Roger. Our heads, Lord Jesus, well, thank you for this day. I want to thank you for this strong leadership team on the dais. I ask that you provide comfort for those in need in our county, our state, and our great nation. In your holy name, amen.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I've asked Rob Rodriguez to lead us. Mr. Rodriguez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Sir.
Madam Clerk, would you call the rolls, please?
Commissioner Helserman.
I hear.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you.
Motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Make sure your, Commissioner, can you please make sure your mics are on because we can hardly hear Commissioner Fiani.
Second sample.
We'd like to include the closed session in this agenda and as item nine point five, Madam Clerk.
Move to amend the agenda with that item.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'd move to amend the agenda to delete eleven G from the agenda. It's brought to us by the Equalization Department. It's a resolution authorizing the reorganization by adding a deputy director. And I believe it's more appropriate to be discussed in budget, and we have a budget process going on. And it would not be an orphan. It would not be neglected. It would just be a time when we're discussing money. And we don't have to get into our contingency fund if that's dwindling. So I'd ask that just be moved over to budget.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Support, are there any questions or comments? Mister.
Mister Chairman, thank you. I would not be in favor of deleting this resolution from our agenda for this evening. The position in question has a certain element of time sensitivity to it. If we were to postpone or eliminate this request and rely on consideration during the budget process, then the position could not be filled until January of next year. The position would be vacated sixteen, seventeen months after that. I have it on good authority that that is not a sufficient amount of time to train somebody to fill that position. Additionally, I checked this afternoon and our financial staff assures me that we have sufficient funds in the general fund contingency that could cover this position. If we were able to fill it, say, effective July first, we would probably be looking at forty to fifty thousand dollars for the balance of the year, and that those funds are available in the general fund contingency. So I'm in favor of proceeding with consideration of this resolution tonight and hopefully passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister.
Yes, at one of our commissioners' requests, I did reach out to the Director of Human Resources today because I was also a little concerned about the issue of what I would call jumping in line of the budget process. And once I had a chance to review the issues with the Director in Human Resources and also with the Equalization Director, just commenting on Commissioner Gross's concern on the timing, it is a real issue. There is a, there is a, seasonality is the wrong word, but there are deadlines involved. And because of those deadlines, we need to get someone in here that has a competency and ability to grasp things in a pretty big hurry. Because if we lose this cycle, if the budget's not approved until December as usual, right, December twenty eighth or whatever, then we're missing a year of a cycle to get someone in here and get them trained. And it's a, you take, you take that and you add it to the fact that the scope of work that's required of the Equalization Department these days is, it's just vastly more than it used to be even five, six years ago. So I would, I understand the motion, but I would not be in favor of it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Commissioner?
It seems to me that we can have this discussion when we have it, so I'm in favor of leaving this on the agenda and talk about it at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to somewhat echo Commissioner Helserman's comments. You, I would like to have the discussion. And if out of that discussion, I honestly haven't made up my mind, but if I, you know, if it, if it, if I did say, conclude that, hey, we can postpone this, you know, I think we still have the option, ability to make a motion to postpone. So, you know, being able to talk about it amongst, you know, all of my colleagues, I would see, I see value in that to understand what issues my colleagues see, the pluses, the minuses, which is we can't do that if we take it off the agenda. Thank you.
All of those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, some of the proposed amendments.
Mister Chair, yes, you're voting on a motion to amend to delete item eleven G.
That's correct. The resolution is muted.
The amendment that we're voting on right now is a motion by Commissioner Drick, seconded by Commissioner Fiani, to amend the agenda to delete item eleven G. You're welcome. Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
No.
Commissioner Helserman.
No.
Commissioner Domas.
No.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
No.
Motion to amend fails. Mister Chair, I do have one question. On the motion to amend to include the closed session, Commissioner Fiani, were you a no vote for that? Okay, I want to just clarify. I show eight yeses, one no for that voice vote, and Commissioner Fiani is the no vote. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
Now move on to item six, correspondence.
Mister Chair, we will need a vote on the agenda as amended, please. And that will have been moved by Commissioner Fiani, seconded by Commissioner Sample.
All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
So I move to accept and file correspondence.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll move to call to the public. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I do have quite a few cards, so what I would do with your permission is I will call who will speak, and then I will announce who will follow them, if that's okay with you, Mister Chair. Okay, Jason Wolford from Howell, Genoa Township, filed by Representative Bob Bizat, Marion Township.
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. I just wanted to encourage you as a county to stand against these red flag laws that we're going to be seeing come up over and over again. I was at the rally that, you know, the anti-gun rally at the Capitol, and I heard those that were there from Governor Whitmer, Dana Nessel, and Joe Tate, which breaks my heart. He is a United States Marine who is now the Speaker of the House, and he's a commanding officer of a grunt, you know, he's a straight-up killer, and I told him that. And so it was hypocritical that he stood up there along with all of those. And I bring that up tonight because we're going to continue to see this pressure, and people are being taken advantage of and being used for political gain. I heard those that are in office talking about why they don't need guns, why we, why we need these red flag laws. And then I even heard clergy misquote scripture on why God is against guns. And so I just wanted to say very quickly that I thought it was fascinating and hypocritical all at the same time that these people that were standing up talking about the need to take our guns were being protected by the state police with weapons and the Capitol Police, and so it's very hypocritical. So tonight, I want to tell you very quickly where our government stands on the right to bear arms and also what God says about it. And so first, I want to tell you, in nineteen forty-two, the United States Marine Corps implemented something that we call the Rifleman's Creed. And I haven't memorized, but if I mess it up, I'll get thrashed, so I want to read it verbatim. It says, "This is my rifle. There are many like it, but this one is mine. My rifle is my best friend. It's my life. I must master it as I master my life. My rifle without me is useless. Without my rifle, I am useless. I must fire my rifle true. I must shoot straighter than my enemy who's trying to kill me. I must shoot him before he shoots me. I will. My rifle and myself know that what counts in war is not the rounds we fire, the noise or the burst, nor the smoke we make. We know that it is the hits that count, and we will hit. My rifle is human, even as I am, because it is my life. Thus, I will learn it as a brother. I'll learn its weaknesses, its strength, its parts, its accessories, its sights, and its barrel. I will ever guard against its ravages of weather and damage, and I will ever guard my legs, my arms, and my eyes and my heart against damage. I will keep my rifle clean and ready, and I will become part of each, we will become part of each other. We will, before God, I swear this creed. My rifle and myself are the defenders of my country. We are the masters of our enemy. We are the saviors of my life. So be it until victory is America, and there is no enemy but peace." That's still taught in Marine Corps boot camp and memorized by every Marine. The government thinks that it's important that we believe in these rifles. To that, we say that creed. Also, Bible verse Nehemiah in four, seven, eighteen says, "Who were building on the wall? Those who carried burdens that were loaded in such a way that each labored on the work with one hand held on his weapon and one on the other. And each of the builders had his sword strapped to his side while he built. The man who sounded the trumpet was beside me. And lastly, throughout the Bible, our military is were accepted by and even commanded by David, who was a man after God's own heart." Jesus himself reserved some strong praise for military commanders in Matthew eight, five through thirteen. In closing, we need to fight against these red flag laws and stand with our government as they, and also the word of God. Thanks. Have a good night. Thank you.
Representative, Representative Bob Bizat, followed by Rob Rodriguez.
Mister Chair, County Commissioners, it's good to see all you guys again. Been a while. Thank you for taking up this issue. As you know, we passed a resolution when I was County Commissioner, and it was a unanimous vote, so I appreciate your reaffirming and taking this resolution up. I've just got a couple of quick things that I'd like to bring up. I know you took an oath of office. You know what the oath of office means to all of us? To protect the Second Amendment, the Constitution of Michigan, the Constitution of the United States. And people are all over and they're violating their oath of office, and they're using, unfortunately, they're using incidents around this country to push forward their agenda. These gun laws, we took four hours of testimony in Lansing Judiciary Committee, and they had dozens of people testify, but they only had two people testify against or for the Second Amendment. And after two minutes, the one guy was shut down, so there's not a, there's not a good discussion, a fair discussion going on in Lansing. And I will comment on the red flag laws, these laws, storage laws, and there's laws on the book to protect. And prosecutors, if they enforce the law, if judges enforce the laws, there's plenty of laws on the books to go after people that are negligent. You don't need storage laws and locking up guns and stuff. That's a responsibility all of us have when we, when we take on the responsibility of carrying a weapon. My guns were always secured in my house. You look at the Oxford School shooting, that, they charged the parents, and that's been available for forever. It's just whether the prosecutor wants to go down that path or not. And the last thing I'll say is the red flag laws are so dangerous without due process. That's probably the most egregious of all of them, because it's gonna, the one big issue I have, it's going to stick law enforcement in a bad, bad situation. Can you imagine in the rural areas of Livingston County, you go out, you knock on some guy's door, he has no, you know, the sheriff's department's in my, in my yard, why are they here? I'm here to take your guns. I have a court order. Can you imagine what's going to happen? These officers are going to be put at risk. They're going to say, you know, you know, why are you taking my guns? And the natural response is going to be, why are you taking my guns? The officer's going to say, well, I've got a court order. You're not taking my guns, so now you've committed a misdemeanor. Without due process, now you've committed a misdemeanor. And if you resist in any way, now you've committed a felony. So I just, I just thank you for taking up this issue. The constituents that vote for all of us expect us to support the Second Amendment, and it's a very important issue that you're dealing with here. So I thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Representative.
Rob Rodriguez, followed by Pam Coomer. Mister Rodriguez, do you have Hamburg as your location?
No, it should be, it should be Brighton.
Brighton, okay. Brighton.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, when I stand in front of you guys, I feel like I'm standing in front of brothers of mine. I know a lot about you all. We work side by side on many things, and I'm not here as anything other than just a simple man. And that simple man has been watching for the last twenty-five years, his rights get stripped away. I can appreciate the fear that's coming from the left. I understand it and I empathize with it. But we all know, when you're in a crisis and you're afraid, your next step is you're going to die. Because you cannot combat a problem with fear. It cannot happen. We have to use logic. So when we look at red flag laws, and I know there's nothing right here right now, folks, but I go to the Capitol once a week, and it's a travesty. I will say that there's nothing more despicable that I've seen than our representatives harassing and mistreating each other. It's horrible. And the left will tell you that the right did it before, but I was there. No, they didn't. But the left is definitely doing it right now. And I hate those terms. You know why I hate those terms? Because everybody in this room, I have ninety-five percent in common with everyone in this room. We have a five percent issue altogether. And yet, we bicker about five percent. That's got to change. We've got to get together and actually start fighting things with real solutions. But, gentlemen, we don't have the luxury of standing by and doing nothing because a freight train is coming to Livingston County, and it's coming quick. Right now, there's seven laws that are going to hit the governor's desk. But as of last year, there was a hundred and forty-five different bills that were in existence. Those bills had two percent chance of passing. It was laughable that they were even designed because they weren't constitutional. These same bills are being passed right now because they have a one-person majority. All we have to do at the Capitol is reach out to one person and change one mind, and maybe we can get on the right track. But in the meantime, we've got to harden this county. We've got to steel ourselves. And you know, if you look back at our founding fathers, they risked everything, folks, everything, on what, on what they believed in. I'm not even asking you to do that. I'm just asking you to start thinking about your conscience. What are you willing to put up with before you decide to stand up? That's really what I'm saying, and that's not in a bad way. That's in a man-to-man way. I mean that. How much are you willing to put up with before you stand? I want you to think about that. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Pam Coomer, Heartland, followed by Rick Nieper.
Hello. I'm here again from the First United Methodist Church of Brighton and Whitmore Lake Church and Society Committee. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Martin and Deaton for your support of Rosa Parks Transit Equity Day back in February. We at First United Methodist Church really appreciate your support. We want to reiterate our commitment to advocating for prioritization of transit services for those who need it most. Safe, affordable, reliable public transportation benefits entire populations and can improve a person's health and social mobility. Equity is not merely the right thing to do. It is also good for business and a strategic imperative. There's some examples of some smaller towns, kind of like ours, that have improved their public transportation. City of Paris, Texas launched a fixed routes bus service in two thousand and sixteen, and I know that's on our transit plan, transportation plan for Livingston County. The service, which includes four routes running hourly between six thirty a.m. and six thirty p.m., Monday through Friday, has filled a critical need in allowing residents to access jobs and social services. From Greg Wilson of the Executive Board of the Chamber of Commerce, he said, "The impact of our bus system has exceeded all expectations when it comes to the impact on local business." Again, Burlington, North Carolina, a city of fifty thousand, it became critical to provide better access to jobs and opportunity. So they initiated a system called Link Transit, which included five color-coded routes connecting the center of Burlington to outlying neighboring towns. The new transit system became a major factor in the decision of a five-thousand-employee business to open there. So in conclusion, our hope and dream is that this board will continue to prioritize the needs of all in our community, will be strategic and proactive in assessing current and future needs for expansion of public transportation. Thank you.
Rick Nieper, Hamburg Township, followed by David Pike.
Well, good evening, everybody. So a lot of, some of the other folks that have come before me have been talking about Lansing, and obviously, I'm a Second Amendment guy, and I've been watching what's going on in Lansing. And I was before this commission back in two thousand and twenty advocating for a resolution for the county due to our gun-grabbing governor, and now it's gotten a lot more serious up there in Lansing because the governor has a whole bunch of minions that are pushing her agenda. And there's a lot of bad things coming, as State Rep. Bob Bizat was mentioning, the red flag laws, that other states that have done this, they've had police officers get killed trying to seize individuals firearms, which is a violation of their constitutional rights. And not only did police officers get killed, but citizens got killed trying to defend their, their rights. So it's a very serious issue that I see coming from Lansing. And I think it's definitely going to need some attention. Things, as far as what they've been doing in Lansing, I have tried numerous times to contact my new state representative, and her priorities seem to be all about Ann Arbor. I seem to, I will call her ahead of a vote and try to get a hold of her, and I usually get a call back a week after the vote has happened, and then we're talking about history. She had the nerve, I couldn't believe it, to tell me how important it was to get universal background checks passed. That was very, very much needed, because according to her, you can walk into Dunham's and buy a gun and not have to go through a background check. And I explained to her that there's no way you can walk into any gun store without filling out a forty-four seventy-three and going through a background check to buy any gun, whether it's a pistol or a rifle. But their experts had told her that you could not, or that you could go in and buy a gun without going through a background check. I could not believe how little knowledge that she has on such a very serious topic and one of my rights, and she's making decisions on this, not having any clue other than their experts told them. So I have been reaching out to my state representative. She is not representing me or any of my, my beliefs. I feel like I'm being taxed without being represented. So I believe there was a thing years ago talking about no taxation without representation. Well, my state rep is definitely in violation of that. I am paying a lot of taxes, and I'm not getting any representation. Her, her, her interests are of Ann Arbor. She has no interest in this county as far as I'm concerned, and she's not representing me in any form or fashion. So I'm counting on this board to take some action. All right, thank you.
David Pike, Hamburg, followed by, followed by Glenn Gogaleski.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak to you. We all know that there are definitely laws that are going to be passed in this state that are, from our group, from our saying, is unconstitutional. What I'm asking you guys to do tonight and in the future is get ahead of the curve. It will come. These laws will be passed. I know Rob wants us to not allow that by going to Lansing and changing some minds, and God bless us if we can do that. But I see what's going on around the country is that the states, after a specific Supreme Court case, the New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin, after that case came out in June of last year, decision, New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, California, all states, a lot of states, decided they were going to push the envelope. Michigan is now pushing the envelope the same way. The good news is that we will eventually overturn those laws. Many of them already have been overturned in several circuits. The Ninth Circuit, the Second Circuit have overturned some of those laws that the states have put out, such as the May Issue Law, the gun bans, Minnesota, the eighteen-to-twenty-one ban, eighteen-years-old to twenty-one-year-old ban. such as the May Issue Law, the gun bans, Minnesota, the, the 18 to 21 ban, 18-years-old to 21-year-old ban. Those are coming. But it's gonna take a long time and a lot of money and effort from a lot of people. What I'm asking you to do again is to get ahead of the curve. When you have the opportunity to say, "We stand with the United States Supreme Court's case of Bruin," then please do so. When you have the opportunity to say that the laws that the state of Michigan will be passing or are passing, those are unconstitutional. And you can say that because you can read the United States Supreme Court that says, "These are unconstitutional." And this is how we know that. So that's what I'm asking you to do, is take a look at what's real, what will happen, and see if you guys can be the, the leaders of the Michigan Board of Commissioners, not just in Livingston County, but around. And, and say, "We're not gonna put up with that because we know it's unconstitutional." Thank you very much.
Glenn Gogaleski, Hartland Township, followed by Jane Locke.
Good evening, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And what I wanna talk about is essentially the rights that are being taken away from us slowly. Recent legislation introduced in Michigan has made the possibility of red flag laws a true threat. These are laws where one must prove their innocence as opposed to being proven guilty. That's the true red flag. To this day, not one argument could be made that gun laws will have any minimal effect on crime. They won't. Dr. John Lott has wrote extensively on this. He's a Yale Professor of Economics. And originally, I was gonna come here this evening and throw out a lot of facts and figures. And you know what? They're out there. I don't need to do this. This, this question of protecting our Second Amendment rights is a fundamental principle. It is a guiding principle of what this country was founded on, what this state was founded on. We are owed that. We now live in a nation where laws are selectively applied based upon where you fall politically. And it's getting worse. Federal departments like the DOJ, IRS, and FBI have been weaponized. And it's really becoming scary. We see protesters from January 6th put in prison, yet no one from the riots in major cities in 2020 have been prosecuted. We see more and more enabling of mental illness in our schools that have led to the last four major school shootings by kids who deny their biological reality. More threats globally and more restrictions locally are happening as we speak. Yet, some are easily fooled and hoodwinked by the warm, fuzzy feeling of laws that sound good but are meaningless, meaningless to the person or persons who wish to commit crimes. They're only going to stop law-abiding citizens. This is an old, old argument. And it, it was true way back when. It's true now. The right to protect oneself is not a suggestion. It's a right. It is my right. My rights should not be restricted by someone's emotional neurosis over an inanimate object that they know nothing about and are fearful of. I have the right to protect myself and my family and my property. I urge you to pass the resolution that we're talking about this evening. And I urge you to give a yes vote on that. Thank you.
Jane Locke, Genoa Township, followed by Mike Murphy.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, and gentlemen. Um, you have to forgive me. I have a lung disease, and I really can't speak very loud. So I will give it my best shot. I'm not gonna cover a lot of territory that these other gentlemen have covered already. Because you know what that is all about. Each and every one of you know what's going on in Lansing is unconstitutional. And that there's a concerted effort, not only in Lansing, Michigan, but in every blue state capital across this country, to circumvent the Constitution and deny law-abiding citizens of their right to self-defense through these draconian anti-Second Amendment laws. In addition to that, um, the violation of the Fourth, Fifth, Ninth, Tenth, and Fourteenth Amendments. So I'm not gonna cover all that territory. Again, you know full well what's going on. What I am here to ask you to do is to actually put teeth in this resolution. I, I know I've talked to a, a few of you offline privately. And you're giving me a quizzical look. And what I mean by putting teeth in this is that we have, at our discretion, the ability to actually, um, stop funding, if you have to, any organization within Livingston County. Any agency in the county that refuses to, to uphold the Second Amendment or their, their constitutional oath of office. Like, I took an oath of office when I was in the military, which was to uphold the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And we have a boatload of enemies in Lansing right now. And it's my duty, it's my duty-bound to uphold my constitutional oath, as well as every one of you. And what I'm here to ask you to do is to put some real teeth in this resolution by denying funding to any agency within Livingston County that fails to uphold their constitutional oath of office in the Second, the Fourth, the Fifth, the Ninth, Fourteenth Amendments. And, uh, and if, if, um, if you would, if you can, I know you can, is to direct our, our esteemed Sheriff Murphy to uphold his oath and, and investigate any suspected violations of the Constitution. And if he finds, um, just reason that there has been a violation, then to turn it over to our county prosecutor to further investigate that and prosecute that. If it's a, a state constitutional issue, if it's a federal constitutional issue, to urge the Eastern District of the federal court to further prosecute any individual who is in violation of 18 U.S.C. 242. And all we need to do is have one person, one person in this whole entire country prosecuted under 18 U.S.C. 242. And this nonsense comes to a screeching halt. Because the very moment someone's sitting in Gitmo for 20 years or swinging from the end of a rope, we'll put a stop to this nonsense once and for all. And that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you very much.
Mike Murphy, Cohocka Township, followed by Jeremy Gibbs.
So, um, I'm a little disappointed, quite frankly, in the process here. Um, you know, we have a process that we follow when we bring resolutions forward. And, and this particular resolution, if it's considered tonight, didn't follow that. It's pretty apparent that the 2A folks know what's going on tonight, but the general public doesn't. That's not cool. That's not open and transparent government, number one. Number two, nobody, this names me by name, uh, and nobody reached out to me. I found out about this proposed resolution on Sunday. That's not cool either. So I support the original, uh, Sanctuary County. I support this resolution with the exception of one paragraph in here that dictates how my office is run. That's not your job. That's my job. So I take a little exception to that. Um, one of the things that people appreciate so much about the Office of Sheriff is, is that it's not controlled by a political, uh, subunit. Whether it's a city, whether it's a township, or whether it's a county. County sheriff is elected by the people. My report card comes in every four years. If you like what I'm doing, you keep me hired. If you don't like what I'm doing, you fire me. It's pretty simple. I determine what my employees do. I determine how my building is used. I determine how my resources are deployed. Again, that's my job as the county sheriff. So, uh, I don't, I 1,000% agree that actions speak louder than words. And nobody has to wonder where I stand on the, on holding, upholding the Constitution. I was one of very few sheriffs that came out and said, "I'm not enforcing the mask orders because they're unconstitutional." I'm not gonna support, enforce, investigate anything that's unconstitutional when it comes to 2A or any other constitutional matter for that. I don't have to go sit on the, on the corner of Michigan Avenue in Grand River and say that every day. That doesn't make it any more true. Actions speak louder than words. I'm a constitutional sheriff. I'm not gonna do anything that's gonna jeopardize that. And if, God forbid, the red flag laws do pass, we won't be enforcing those or investigating those either. So, little disappointed with how this whole thing unrolled. Um, I'm not here to chastise, but you know me, I get a little fired up every now and then. So that's all I got to say.
Jeremy Gibbs, Osceola, followed by Larry Parsons.
Gentlemen, uh, I was just gonna come and watch tonight and take things in, and then maybe discuss it on the podcast tonight. Uh, but Rob asked me to speak, and he asked me specifically to speak about lawfare. And so, uh, not having anything prepared, I'm just gonna go for my heart on this. They are passing laws and doing a lot of unconstitutional things all over the place so that they can, either with color of law or behind closed doors, try to make criminals out of all of us. Um, I appreciate so much what Sheriff Murphy just had to share and what mo- most of everybody else has had to share. I'm hearing more and more, it's just becoming more and more of a mantra that all politics is local. And here was where we are. We're local. What we do in our local places is beginning to gain momentum and have more teeth. And I think it's very important, however symbolic or, um, enforceable the things we do in places like this. It is at least sending a message to those who have flipped everything upside down. Our country was never founded on a top-down control. It was founded on grassroots and everybody having a representative and being able to share their voice with their representatives. And then having that go up and give a national commentary on that. Um, but it's been flipped to where most people don't refer to our representatives. We refer to our, um, lawmakers or whatever other terminology that has no accountability in the, in the dialogue. So when we look at lawfare, they pass these red flag laws. And then, uh, and we've read them. We read them on the show. I've had, um, Rob on the show. I've had, um, Dan Woolhan on the show. We've read through them. We've just, we've talked about them. We've looked at them. We've read them off-air. We've discussed them. There's so much ambiguity in there. And I appreciate awesome what, what Sheriff Murphy just said, that he's not gonna enforce that. Because that is so powerful. I was very proud of him during, uh, all the lockdowns, that he refused to do that. But the rest of our state is not doing that as well. But if we don't make it stand locally, if we don't send a message to them saying that you can pass what you want there, but just like our, uh, well, the guy sitting in the White House right now, um, said that, you know, his press secretary said, "Well, that, you know, these courts are making rules. We'll just, we'll just ignore them." And that was echoed by AOC recently, uh, one of the CNN programs I had to suffer through watching. But what we do matters. And here's the bottom line for me. One day, we'll win. Because the right to self-defense ultimately reaches a certain point, a tipping point. We don't want it to come to certain tipping points. We don't want armed conflict. But at the same time, as someone else said tonight, what do you, I was, it was Representative Buzat. Um, you know, what are you gonna do when somebody comes to your door with a piece of paper and says, "I'm taking away your right to self-defense?" That's a powder keg. We don't want that. But that's what they're doing. They're employing lawfare. And as our commissioners, who set policy and who pass resolutions, uh, it behooves you guys to be that much more vigilant to put things in place that can combat that, that can give us teeth. I have to carry insurance. As a const- as a concealed carry person, uh, I'm compelled to carry insurance so that if I'm involved in a, uh, a shooting incident, that I have, you know, $2 million policy that can back me up in a country that has it enshrined in our Constitution that we have the right to self-defense. That shouldn't be that way. But we just had a gentleman down in Texas who was convicted uh, of defending himself against a BLM rioter who pointed a gun at him. Two people refused, or two offices refused. And then finally, they got a DA in there that would prosecute him. He's about to, I think he was sentenced today. I haven't read the news yet today on him. We've gotta be vigilant on that, or we're gonna lose our country. Thank you, gentlemen.
Larry Parsons, Hartland, followed by Mike, Mike Detmer.
I don't know if anybody's speaking, but we cannot hear you on Zoom.
Ah, is it working? Okay, I'll start over. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Larry Parsons. I'm a veteran, a combat engineer. Served in the United States Army from 1982 to 1988. Reason I'm here today is because our Constitution and our rights are under full assault by a band of tyrants in Lansing. As you all know, many veterans made many sacrifices since the inception of this beautiful country of ours. Some have lost limb or life in the defense of this country and to protect and defend the Constitution, including the Second Amendment. The Constitution states that "The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Period. Doesn't say, except for what Governor Whitmer says. It doesn't say, except for what a out-of-control legislature says, says "The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." What they're seeking to do is to undermine the sacrifice and deaths of countless veterans since the beginning of this country. We should not stand for, nor should we tolerate, this type of tyranny. So what I'm asking you, gentlemen, to do simply is to pass the most aggressive bill, or what do you call it? You call it a resolution. Let's call what it is, a resolution that will protect the people of this county from out-of-control, rabid legislature who seeks to undermine every veteran that served this country since its beginning. I'd like to thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, the last card I have is Mike Detmer, Howell, Michigan.
Thank you. Welcome to the Livingston County Board of Commissioners.
Good to be back. I wish I was back under different circumstances, talking about planting lollipop trees or something like that. I think it's been a little over three years since I addressed this body before, so new, new faces. Uh, before I begin, though, I'd like to, uh, just acknowledge on the way here, there was a terrible accident on Michigan Avenue in '59. It looked like, uh, the, uh, lifelike was brought in for that. I don't know what the circumstances are, but I'd like to offer thoughts and prayers to whoever was involved with that. Commissioners, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel on everything that was said here tonight. I think everybody was on point. Uh, we do have a constitutional crisis. We have two constitutions, as you know. We have the Michigan Constitution, and we have the federal Constitution and Bill of Rights. The laws that they're talking about in Lansing, I mean, that's a direct violation of Article 1, Section 6 of the Michigan Constitution, and obviously, the Second Amendment of our Bill of Rights. And I think what everybody's asking all of you, whether it's tonight or at the next session, you're the line in the sand. We see some terrible things coming out of Lansing. We have a political party which has run roughshod. And we have to draw a line. It's about protecting our God-given inalienable rights, bottom line. The left will come up with many excuses. It's for safety reasons. They'll approach it from, "It's reasonable." Just this one little thing here, or this one little thing there. And before you know it, it's like, you're like a frog in a pot of water. That water starts to warm up gradually and gradually. And before the frog figures out that it's too late, the water's boiling and the frog's dead. That's where we're at. The right to bear arms is a God-given freedom, which is spelled out not for our benefit, but it's spelled out for the government to understand what their restrictions concerning those rights are. And we have to make sure at a county level, since it's not going to happen at the state level. And I have my suspicions that it's going to take a, go all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court if it ever comes to a court battle. We have to start making an example now. We have to at the local level, which by the way, you wield more power in the day-to-day lives of everybody who lives in the state at the county level, it falls with you. So I haven't seen the language of the resolution that has been proposed. I've heard some people say more teeth than the resolution that was passed by this body three years ago. I'm glad you did. That makes, made a statement across the state and that sent shockwaves. Thank God for Sheriff Murphy and his statement tonight on record that he is not going to uphold things like Constitution-killing red flag laws. But I think what the people who elected all of you would like to see is something that is a definitive that we will not uphold any unconstitutional tyrannical laws which violate all of our God-given principles and freedoms. That right to bear arms is that one, that is the line in the sand that separates freedom from total government control. And I think the people of this state and the people of this nation need to have that. That's the whole purpose of it. It's not for hunting. It's not for self-defense. It's the ultimate reason for the Second Amendment on the federal level was to last ditch effort. If the government decided to go rogue, this was the last line of defense for the American people to defend themselves against tyranny. That's what we're talking about here. And we're seeing this from state to state to state. Michigan's the latest example. So my three minutes is up. I appreciate your time tonight. And I, knowing most of you in this room, I think you'll all make the right vote. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Be a stranger.
Mr. Detmer.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Commissioner, I have Cindy M.
I'd like to speak. If I could, short time.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Am I out?
I'm Edwin Naas. I have a residency in Brighton. I spend most of my time up on an island called Boye Blanc. And I'd like to open up. I volunteered a lot of time in this county, eight years with the Sheriff Department as a fire investigator. All free. Worked under Fred Mueller, who started the 800 team. I was Brighton Township Fire Lieutenant for 12 years, got a degree in fire science and hazardous material. And I'll just say this. I have property in Sheboygan County, a, it's a A2. I have property in Mackinac County, A2 also. I'm a firm believer of hunting. It's my heritage. We used to hunt with Bo. My mom, you know, tonight I wish she was here. She was Seneca Clan. We got put on the Trail of Tears, my ancestors, along with the Cherokees. And what did they do before they put us on the Trail of Tears? My family and ancestors took away our guns. And that was for our way to put food on the table. Put food on the table. And that's what our government did. And don't say it can't happen again under idiots like we got running this state right now, who was bought and paid for by George Soros. Just look at what that man has done or trying to do. You know, he's bought every prosecutor. Now let's get to the prosecution. Let's get to some judges. Michigan State, that shooter would have not killed the people that he killed there if that judge would have not delayed his sentence from felony gun warrants, drunk driving and having a pistol. He reduced his sentence to a misdemeanor. Boom, he went out and bought a gun. He done what he did. So who's at fault here? That judge should be kicked off the bench. And if he could be tried for the murders of them, just like the young, the young parents of the boy down in metro area, that judge should be hanging too. And I don't mean physically, I mean out of work, out of a job. We've got the same problem in this county. We had a lawmaker, a lawmaker on tape fighting state cops with a loaded handgun, driving recklessly, driving drunk. And he absolutely got nothing. He committed five or six felonies that that day. He cut his tether, had a jail cuff key taped to the bottom of his foot. And we had a local judge that turned him loose. He didn't get nothing. He didn't get no jail time. He didn't have to go pick up paper. They were all felonies. They were all felonies. God forbid he shoots somebody and he's in our Capitol. You know? It's our judges that's got to step on somebody. If I committed with my handgun or I was carrying a gun and committing a felony, I should lose my rights to carry a gun the rest of my life. And I go with that. And that's the law. But not in this county. If you were a Democrat, and I used to be, there is no such thing anymore as a true Democrat, to my knowledge. And I don't want to offend nobody. But I used to represent about 24,000 carpenter mill rights in this state. And a lot of us are going against our trade unions because our leadership is as corrupt as some of our government upstairs. And I'll just say this, in this county, I have a home in Brighton City. Our response times, thanks to Murphy, I don't see any state police here, but thanks to Murphy, thanks to Brighton City, thanks to Howell PD. Their response time is very rapid. But it's under two minutes for Brighton City, I believe, two minutes or less. What can happen to your door in two minutes? If I was a bad guy, I boot your door in and I could open up, I don't care if it's an AK-47 or a 22 pistol. I could do a great deal of harm to you and your family. What have I got to protect my family and my wife? Like the rapist in Detroit raped an 80-year-old woman and the husband had to sit and watch it. I'd have loved to have that old man have a handgun in his, in his lap. He couldn't get out of a wheelchair. That's how bad it, I know my, my two minutes is up. And you know, I thank you. I just want to put food of thought in your mind. And that's where I stand, you know? It's our God-given right. Until I violate that right, then I should be able to keep my right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have Cindy M. on Zoom.
Hi, Cindy McNevich, Hamburg Township. I just want to question, what is this resolution about? I don't see anything on the agenda. And it would be improper, since it wasn't added, when you guys approved the agenda, it'd be improper to vote on anything tonight, that's for sure. And I am just shaken by the emotions of the ti, and the timing of this demonstration or whatever. The, the, the laws in, in Lansing right now, they are more safety laws, like the person said, the left is going to say. So here I am, the left is saying that there's safety laws. Yes, everybody should keep their guns locked up, but not everybody does. And the red flag laws, I hear from the right that many of these mass shootings are caused not by guns, but by mental health. So a red flag for a parent to say their child is depressed. Can you help take this gun away from someone? They might kill themselves or shoot up a school. This is untimely. A month after Michigan State, we had Covenant mass shooting two weeks ago. And just yesterday, there was one in Louisville. I just am, I'm really upset about the timing of all this. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, wait. And if, if it truly is mental health, I'd like to see mental health programs expanded in the county.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have Lori Cowan or Cohen.
Ma'am, you have three minutes.
Yep, thank you. How many school shootings, how many children, how many fathers, mothers, sons, daughters need to die before we say enough is enough? Why is it that protecting a life is not as important as protecting an inanimate object, a gun? It's disturbing the lack of compassion that I'm hearing in this room. Your freedom to own a gun is not being taken away. Common sense solutions are being sought to protect life. Every day, 100 people are killed in the U.S. by guns. There have been over 950 school shootings now since Sandy Hook. 12 children die every day from gun violence in the United States. That's all I have to say. I'm just utterly disturbed of what's going on right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I do not see anybody else on Zoom, Commissioner.
We'll move on then to the next category, which is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of March 27, 2023.
Commissioner Domas, can you please speak up a little bit? We can hardly hear you on Zoom.
Support Gross.
Are there any comments or questions? Any corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign. Thank you. The next item is going to be a closed session to meet with.
Mr. Chair, can you please handle 9.0, which will be the table items, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item nine is table items. I don't believe we have any. Item 9.5 is a closed session to meet, for the board to meet with legal counsel to discuss a legal matter. Legal opinion. Thank you, sir.
That will require a roll call vote to go into the closed session, Mr. Chair.
I move that we go into the closed session for legal.
Commissioner Howserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas. Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
No.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be in closed session for the next. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. We, this is the end of the recess and this matter will be, will proceed through the normal process and will be turned over to the Public Safety Committee for its determination and then likely to the next available board meeting. So I hope we haven't kept you awake too badly here, but believe me, we're on your side. So with that, we will move on with the agenda. Board reports, item 10. Does anyone have any reports?
I do.
Yes, sir. Right. Had a busy day, didn't you?
Thank you. Yes, Chairman, I did. So I want to report, American exceptionalism is still alive and well. And Brighton High School today between six and seven, which we were all here, but I was a, a guest of school board trustee John Conley. He took me in at five o'clock and Brighton High School had an advanced medical science lab open house. And I was thoroughly impressed. And then they took me on a tour of the rest of the STEM facilities there. So I, three weeks ago, I went and visited my son at, at his university. The stuff they have in Brighton, I think, is better than what they have at the university. So, so I wanted to report on that. The second item I had, I was working a project with Veteran Services Director Ramon Baca. And this has finally come to fruition. Many of you might have received it in your email on Monday. We're doing our Livingston County Veteran Services First Responders. Howell Recreation will present the first annual 911. Never forget 5K, 5K trail run. And so this is going to be at our Fillmore County Park. And write the date down. It'll be September 16. And I'll get this out to everybody on the board and I'll get a copy over to Madam Clerk. All the runners will receive a T-shirt and a finisher's medal and a portion of the proceeds will go back to Livingston County Parks. So Ramon Baca had this idea. He's a director over at Veteran Services and we ran with it. And I just want to put kudos out to our own Howell Parks and Recreation. They're doing all the heavy lifting. They're getting all the vendors together and, and getting all the websites set up. So you'll be able to sign up for this May 1st. And only be 500 people able to go into the first one. And then, Mr. Chair, I'm also a CTA. I'm a certified tourism ambassador for Livingston County. So I took the training and I thought I knew a lot about Livingston County, but Mary and the crew over there with the Brighton Howell, that it was just a great class. And if anybody gets a chance, especially if you own a business in this county, to get some time, I think the next class is coming up in the middle or end of April. So that's all I had to report on.
Very good. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Yes, sir. Commissioner Sample.
Thank you, Commissioner Domas. I had an opportunity on April 1st to take a ride down to East Palestine, Ohio with a great community leader and she's amazing. Danielle Anso, she put together a water drive for those folks down there in Floodgate Church up in Heartland helped out quite a bit. There was church. I don't remember everybody's names, so I apologize for that. But we ended up taking about 28 full cases of water down there, a bunch of gallons and stuff like that. So it was pretty interesting to get an opportunity to take part, but she's a handy township resident and she's, she's quite a trooper and a little help with Ryan Kelly. And it was, it was a good time and a good opportunity to see what happens when things go wrong in your community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Anybody else? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, I just want to update the board on the accepted receiving station in Heartland Township. I, I attended the most recent Board of Public Works meeting and was asked via resolution to, I'll, I'll say kind of be a go-between, between the Board of Public Works and the Heartland Township, try to work out a resolution that avoids having to go through the judiciary system. I'm not sure how successful I'd be, but I said I'd be happy to, you know, lend a hand in that regards. I do plan on providing the, the board with a report on, on, you know, the situation as it stands today. It's significantly different than the, what I had authored a number, maybe a month or, or two, two months ago. Some of the options that, that I presented are off the table because it, of the latest, Heartland Township cannot, doesn't have the sewer capacity that it used to. And I, I'll, I'll go with that in, in, in the report. So anyway, look for that discussion hopefully next week at one of the committee meetings. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I represent Livingston County on the Michigan County's Workers' Comp Board. And we had our first quarter meeting. I am very pleased that things are going very well on that end. We are very well reserved. The, the Workers' Comp Fund is very well reserved. I expect to be able to report after the May meeting that we should get a significant refund. Look forward to getting the final report so I can give you that dollar amount. But as far as workers' comp expense and our overall fund, it's looking very good so far.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
I misspoke. I said 28 cases. It was 28 pallets of water. It was about, it was about, it was, it was about 50, roughly 50,000 pounds of water. So I want, I wanted to restate that because I wanted to express how good of a job she, she did collecting that.
That's amazing.
So that's it. Sorry. that's it. Sorry.
I have something probably should report. I, this last week I had two, had two opportunities I usually don't have, uh, one to go to the Handy Township meeting and the other to go to Howell Township meeting because they have, uh, Monday meetings and, um, anyways, uh, Fowler or Handy Township, uh, passed their solar ordinance, which I think is a very, very sound ordinance and, uh, probably, uh, one that other townships could use, although every township is a little bit different. How they, uh, where, where it would be good in the township, but they passed a very good resolution, uh, worked very well on that. And so, just for your information.
Thank you, Commissioner Helserman. Sure. Anybody else? So we'll move on now with the resolutions and I'll turn the meeting over to Commissioner Drake.
Thank you, Commissioner. Gentlemen, looking at your resolutions to be, uh, coordinated with our secretary, please mark oh four nine oh as a roll call vote. Oh five four a roll call, oh five five a roll call and oh six oh a roll call. Just so when we get there, we do the right things. Then I have some amendments that will have to be, uh, placed on the record for oh five six and oh five seven. And I think everybody got copies of the three pages of amendments with, uh, pricing on various, uh, proposals. So with that as the preliminary matter, we'll go into agenda item number eleven, Resolutions for Consideration. Eleven A, two oh two three, oh four dash oh four nine. It's brought to us by Nathan Byrd. It's a resolution authorizing entry of participation agreements in partial settlement of the National Prescription Opiate Litigation and entry of state and local government intrastate agreement concerning allocation of settlement proceeds. Is there some?
Of the resolution.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second sample.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Domas, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Cindy, are you, uh, up? Mister Bean. Thank you for attending tonight. Can you hear us?
I sure can, Commissioner. Thank you.
This was, uh, this was, uh, talked about at a committee meeting. I believe it was fam. So everybody had a chance. Any questions to be directed to our guest?
Do you want to give us an update? Is there anything that? No?
I'm, I'm ready to vote.
All right.
Thank you for attending. It was concise and, uh, well received. We usually don't get that, you know, that many people talking that much, but that's okay.
Oh, it was, it was a joy to watch, Commissioner. I, my dad always said, don't grab defeat from the jaws of victory. So, uh, it's important.
With that, gentlemen, this is, this is a roll call vote.
Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very kindly. Onto eleven B. It's number oh two two three dash oh four dash oh five oh. It's a resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Sheriff Murphy's at the table, but we need a motion to start.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Domas, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Sheriff, you have the floor.
Someone take a lesson from the last guy unless there's any questions. And, uh, just when you look at me, pretend you're looking at Sarah Applegate. She had to go get her kids. So she was.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, I, um, was wondering if you can get, um, education clarification on how i- is it decided on, you know, um, who's, who is nominated and put forward to this in this committee?
Yeah. So we're talking about the Community Corrections Board. Um, that is, that's that board. Um, and by the grant funding that's received from the Department of, um, Corrections, there's specifically positions, i.e. the sheriff, prosecutor, and the list goes on. I think there's fifteen that they, that they want on that particular board. So we filled those. Um, and then there was conversation, there's some regular attendees. Commissioner Deaton will be replacing, um, uh, Carol Sue, uh, former, uh, judge and Carol Sue Reader, uh, as the Board of Commissioners representative. But basically it's the existing board now, looks at where we're missing anybody that's, that is supposed to be there, um, by their bylaws or by the, by the grant, and then anybody else that wants to be a part of it. So what you've got, and I was not prepared to do this. Sarah said she had to go pick her kids. So I don't have in, in front of me the, the actual resolution or the cover letter, but, Commissioner Deaton would be replacing, uh, Carol Sue, as I mentioned. Mike Boyden is the, um, Michigan Department of Corrections Supervisor for Livingston County. Carol Sue Reader, retired judge, retired commissioner, um, wanted to stay on, so she will just be a member rep. Jennifer Bigelow works closely with, um, folks at the jail with, um, it's called Second Chance Network Support Network, which they offer up mentors to, um, help men and women that are returning to society, basically, uh, act as a sounding board and, and help them out. And then, um, yeah, I guess that's it. So those were the people that we, uh, in addition to the already existing folks.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Sheriff Murphy, uh, Ms. Bigelow, does she also work with the federal inmates?
I'm sorry?
Does Ms. Bigelow also work with the federal inmates?
Yes. Um, however, the, uh, very, very little and it's more our, for, uh, reach the forgotten ministry that works with them because remember that the federal inmates that we have, they're pre-detention. So they're not sentenced yet. When and if they ever become sentenced, they'll ride off to a federal prison, right? So there's limited involvement.
Seeing no other, uh, hands, I close the discussion. All those kindly voice vote. Aye, if you're in favor.
Aye.
Any nays? The, it's unanimous, nine to zero passes. Now we can get work done. Item number two oh two three dash oh four dash oh five one. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Tax Allocation Board. It's brought to us by the Board of Commissioners.
Move the resolution, Helserman.
Support Nakagiri.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Helserman, supported by Commissioner Nakagiri, who might be, uh, in support if there are any questions or comments. Questions or comments?
Just, uh,
Commissioner Helserman?
Chuck Wright is, uh, one of my constituents and think this is the second year doing this, second time. So he's looking forward to serving.
Thank you. I'll close the discussion. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nine to zero passes unanimously. We're on to D. Numbered two oh two three dash oh four dash oh five two. It's a resolution approving appointment to the Livingston County nine-one-one Advocacy Oversight Board, also known as Central Dispatch. Can I have a motion?
So move Gross.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Keisha? Are there any questions for her before, any questions, comments, objections?
Heard she likes lots of questions.
I heard that. With that, all those in favor kindly say, kindly say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's a nine to zero unanimous, uh, passage. We're on to number oh two two three dash oh four dash oh five three. It's a resolution authorizing an application of the fiscal year two oh two four grant with Michigan Veteran Affairs Agency to support Livingston County Veteran Services to enhance and improve operations of veteran services. May I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Deaton, support by Commissioner Gross. Are there any questions, concerns, comments, objections? Commissioner Gross.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I believe when this was brought up at, I think it was fam last week, Director Baca informed us that the dollar amount had been reduced from a hundred and forty-four thousand five seventy, I believe, to sixty-five thousand and change, something of that sort. So I think this resolution needs to be modified to reflect that.
Is it the recollection of any other commissioner that that was, uh, a amendment brought to us by Director Baca?
Who has the information?
I think, I think it was.
Cindy?
General governance or personnel.
My, my recollection is that, um, Director Baca was saying it's likely we're not going to get the amount that we ask for. You know, the, the resolution is to authorize a grant application in, in the amount a hundred and forty-four thousand. Whether or not we get the hundred and forty-four thousand, that, I think that's what Director Baca was saying. So I'm not, with that being said, it's, I, I, I'm not sure that we need to necessarily change the resolution.
The resolution is just to, um, authorize the application. So he will come back once the award, if, if it is awarded, to authorize acceptance of the award. He was not able to make it today. So I told him I would answer any questions if you did have any.
I, I think his comment was is what they asked for last time and what they got were two different numbers.
So am I hearing, Commissioner Gross, that your question's been answered and we don't have to proceed with any amendment?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's a nine to zero unanimous passage of oh five three. We're on to two oh two three dash oh four dash oh five four. It's a resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty-three County Equalization Report as submitted with the accompanying statements. It's from equalization. Can I get a motion?
Support, Smith.
I'm sorry, I did not detect the first person that made the motion.
I did.
Oh. I don't hear you talk with your glasses in.
No. Very often. It is, it's a little more difficult. I'll grant you that.
Motion by Commissioner Domas, support by Commissioner Smith. I believe this was discussed at fam. Are there any, it wasn't. Would you like to make a presentation? Would you like to make a presentation or would you, would you stand on your?
I can make a few comments.
Comments are okay. Proceed.
This report that I give you is a year's worth of work from equalization and the local units of government. Anything we do is not, I mean, it's not our work. It's a combination of the local units, the collaboration between the local units and us. So with that being said, um, our assessed values went up eleven point three eight percent this year. Our taxable value went up seven point seven four percent this year. So we have seen some major increases.
What was that last number, please?
Seven point seven four.
What was the first one, eleven?
Eleven point three eight. We did see major increases. Anything that we do, we give the local units a ratio for a class of property. We deal with classes of property. The local units look at individual properties and they hand out the assessments. So we have to be in agreement for us to get this far in it. And if you look on pages, um, six and seven of the report, page six is all zeros, page seven is all ones. That basically indicates that we are in agreement. They came between forty-nine and fifty percent of true cash value. So, um, I'm recommending that you approve the, um, equalization report as assessed.
Questions, comments?
So Commissioner Helserman? So you're the reason we have a, have a Tuesday meeting?
Yes. And that too.
Okay. And, uh, thank you for all your work. It, uh, we, it looks like a lot of work, but it's probably actually a whole lot more work than it looks like. So.
It's a year's worth of work.
Yes, right. Thank you very much.
Believe it or not.
Commissioner Gross.
Thank you. Ms. Baskin, when I, when I looked through this, uh, indicated that it covers sixteen townships in three cities of, we don't do anything with respect to the villages or are they?
The villages are part of the townships.
Considered part of. Okay, I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Thank you. Um, how does Headley, um, enter into this? You know, I think you said the, um, taxable value was up seven percent?
Another calculation that I have to do for all our taxing authorities within the county. And, um, that will be some of the next process that I, that's done. And it will be calculated the way where it's recommended. The law clearly states that it is the, uh, CPI that's used. Our CPI was seven point seven nine. And so anything over and above that will roll back, um, our mileage rate.
Wasn't it the CPI or five percent, the lower?
You're thinking proposal A.
Okay.
Proposal A says the CPI or five percent, whichever is, is less. So you're getting them confused.
Okay.
Okay. Headley's totally different, another category. Probably the next meeting I'm too. So, um, to go over that. It, it, but that's the.
But it'll be capped at five percent. I'm, I mean, right?
No.
No?
It's seven point seven nine.
But I mean, the, 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 the homeowner.
You're talking proposal A.
Yeah, yes, yes.
That's capped at five percent.
Okay. All right.
Yes. Plus any additions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, last question. What are the implications, uh, if your figures are wrong? I mean, what, what, what happens? Who, who gets impacted?
The local units. This is the process of it. If the, the assessor does not agree with what we come up with and we can't come to a conclusion based on, on that, I will give them the ratio. They're going to set the values where they think they should be. Then I would have to ask you to give them a factor. And you would factor them. They go to tribunal at that point. And, um, it's disgusting tribunal and whatever says, whatever they come up with is the way it goes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think I have one. You sure? Sample. Do you see a reduction in personal property taxes with the changes in the use tax?
It's not so much the use tax. Um, they, they've given exemptions.
Right.
And the latest one that they just did, and this is the first time this year, is anything between, they've exempted everything up to eighty thousand dollars that the person can ask for this exemption. Now it's between eighty and one eighty. And so we've seen a slight reduction in that for that. I, it hasn't grown any in, I think it's ten, fifteen years. So, yeah, I, it's, you know, it's reduced.
Right? Yeah. I didn't know with, uh, the personal property on equipment and stuff like that, the, the, they changed it to a two percent use tax instead. So now that there won't be claiming personal property on equipment. So I didn't know if that'll cause.
That's a, that's a little bit different. There, the heavy equipment is, um, more or less like an exemption. It's a special use, um, on it. We don't have a lot of that. It has to be, it's very specific in what it deals with. I think there's only like four or five of them in the whole state.
I didn't know if that would just pull revenue from the county or not.
No. It, it, we haven't seen anything from that.
Thanks.
Any further comment, question, objection? Seeing none, discussions closed. All those be ready for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to resolution two oh, two, three, dash, oh, four, dash, zero, five, five. It's a resolution authorizing the reorganization of the Equalization Department brought to us again by equalization. Sue, if you'd like to wait for half a second, I need a motion and then a second.
I've moved the resolution.
Support Smith.
Moved by Helserman, supported by Smith. Sue, if you'd proceed with your presentation. Yes, it's the one about the position.
Okay. Bottom line here, things have changed in equalization, although the work hasn't changed. We have a new reporting system at the state that is not moving real smoothly on stuff. So some things are taking us longer to do. For instance, to get Brighton Township in for the equalization report, it used to be we used to only have to bring in, I mean, balance with the assessed and taxable. We have what we call miscellaneous statistics reports, seven pages of nine rows of numbers that everything has to match now in order for us to do the reporting to the state out of BSNA. So one property that we had, we were off, I think, four properties in Brighton Township. And we have to find the properties because our numbers have to match. And it had three hundred thousand dollars worth of adjustment in personal property. Well, the way personal property is done, you can't have adjustment in it. So something didn't come across straight, you know? And the information that we were given from the township said, no, it doesn't come across straight. Took us two days to find that. Now, that's, you know, normally it's no big deal, but we're on a time crunch here to get everybody in, to get everything done. They have until April, it was April fifth this year to give us their information. So, and I know everybody likes their information early. So it's kind of, it's, it's time sensitive, everything that I do. So it's been a hectic year this year. And I've decided in a couple of years I'm going to retire, so we need to get somebody in there to help out, to take over when, you know, I get ready to leave. I was at a class this year and they said it takes about five years to become proficient in a job, this particular job in the class that, that we're doing. So that's two years. They'll, they'll understand what's going on, but we do need the help in there and this will help somebody to move on. So it'll be a smooth transaction, transition when I leave.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Gross.
I apologize for being a little flip, but when you retire, are you going to stay in the area as a consultant to help us?
They'll have my cell phone number. How's that? I don't know if I'm going to be in the area, but.
Do you see the, the effort to find a deputy would be in your sole discretion or in partnership with the board or how would you do that?
I don't care how it's done, to be honest. I mean, if you got, if you want to sit in on it, that's, that's where I'm at on it. But I will tell you this, the last time I went to hire somebody, it took me probably, I got them fast, so it probably took me about three or four months. This is a very limited field that people go into. In equalization is equally limited opposed to assessing. There's like twelve hundred assessing units and there's only eighty-three equalization units. So people have a tendency to go more into assessing. We're a little bit different than assessing. So whether somebody would want to come here to equalization, like I said, I took, I think, about three months to get somebody before the last person I hired. A couple of years ago, it took me a year to find somebody. I wanted a level three. I got an MCAT, that's the beginners. He went through school, we trained him. So this is what we're kind of looking at, why this is kind of like, maybe, maybe you should really consider it now to do it. I haven't only noticed when I can get somebody to come in and do it.
Can you report, it says near the end that the, the reporting will eventually be less work, but there's a new system that's, you got to get.
I'm, I'm talking the new system's going to be less work, hopefully.
To get to that less work.
Yeah.
How long do you think it'll be before it gets to be less work?
I do probably thirty different reports to the state. They put our biggest one out there first. And the two guys that worked on it, I had to apologize to them because I told them, I said, hey, when your ears were burning in November and December, that was me, you know? I said, but I can see hope for it, you know, that any, eventually we'll all do this and it will be more efficient for us to do it, hopefully. I don't know. And they keep adding reports on there. We had one report last year, this year we've got five, I think, on there. So it's, it's learning to do what we do a little bit different and getting it to go into the system correctly because they're having problems on their end too.
At the state?
Yeah.
And would you see this position perhaps be self of us dissolving once the, once you retire and there's the deputy there? They wouldn't want, that we could get away with that?
I'll be honest with you, I have no clue on that one. And it's, it wouldn't be my call anyway, so you know.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, when, when we mentioned the hiring of a deputy director, would it be helpful to have our head of HR review for everybody the process of hiring deputies? Non-share, non-share of deputies, what a process is?
Good idea.
Thank you. So the, the typical process requires posting of a position. It, in this case, we may use a recruiter at Hiring Solutions because it is such a niche field and we would want to aggressively recruit for this position. Typically, so once we have a pool of candidates, we assemble a team of folks to do the interviews. Who's on that committee? Would, I'm sure we could come to a consensus working with Nathan and with the department, myself, to figure out who's, who wants to be included on that. If the board wants a seat at the table, I'm, yeah, nobody would be concerned with that. And so we would go through a typical interviewing process, come up with a selection, which typically, again, is reached as a consensus by the interviewees. With this position, not clear to me whether it's one that requires board, board approval.
Deputy, I don't believe.
Has not typically.
Here's the thing, even if I pick a deputy and you don't feel they qualify for the director position, you can always post the director position.
So, right, let's flash forward. Sue has given her retirement date. We have preferably a deputy in place, someone, you can see this is a niche field. It's something that's a very specialized skill set that we would be recruiting for. And, and so we would be, you know, attempt, it would be difficult to recruit in the position. But going forward, Sue puts in her retirement notice, we're planning for succession filling. The position would likely be posted, although that would be a determination made, you know, two years from now, again, in conjunction with the county administrator, with the Board of Commissioners, what that process would look like. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, I just want to share a perspective in that because, you know, we have, you know, a succession planning, you know, process in, in place in the county. You know, we, I, I fully expect, this is my expectation, that we'll find a deputy director and really we're looking for Sue Boswick's replacement. And, you know, so really we're hiring Sue Boswick's replacement and it is statutorily vested in the Board of Commissioners to, to, you know, to make that, to approve the, the director. Therefore, I, you know, when, even though our process is not to have the board get involved of the deputy director approval, I, I strongly feel we, that the board should and it should take a, a larger role than, you know, just waiting for a single candidate to be presented to the board for an up or down vote. That's my two cents because we, we are essentially choosing the, in, in many aspects, the next director. So my, my two cents.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Deaton.
Commissioner, so this will be increasing that department by one FTE and whether or not we hire another director and that, that position will still be there, right? Thank you.
Did you get an answer?
Yep. Listen, yes. That's a.
You're the right.
But, Jim.
Is that your hand up first?
I don't.
You did, you did.
I don't care.
Commissioner Domas. Must have been my hand then, I guess. Sue, I, we're going to miss you. You know, you've been a real mainstay in that department and when things got tough, you never gave up. And so you're going to be difficult to replace, but I'm encouraged to, to know that, to Commissioner Naka Gary's point, that the board will somehow be involved in, in the process. And I, I think that's a very good management style and everybody's opinion at this level is important and as yours is, of course. So we look forward to that going away party. I understand. Well, we'll be here. We'll be here.
You're not pushing her out the door.
Commissioner Helsman.
I, I sense there's some sense of that this is not necessary at this time. And maybe I'm reading the tea leaves wrong, but address the, I think in your writing, as you talked about the downturn and how many you had in your department before the downturn and, and at this point, that's, that's like, what, twelve years ago, something like that?
It was, oh, eight, yeah. We had seven and a half people in the office that worked. And as people retired or left, they weren't replaced. Now we're down to four. We're doing the same amount of work, not really. We're doing more work because back in two thousand and ten, the apportionment report was at the clerk's office and the deputy clerk, that's all she did, was my understanding of it till she retired. When she retired, that came over to equalization. So I have the apportionment report, I do taxes, bring tax bills in, get those ready for the local, help them with that, the local units with that. And our studies are all due from September through December. So it gets a little bit crazy, is a nice way of putting it. If anybody calls and I'm abrupt and blunt, please, please disregard that. It's not intentional, it's just the way it comes out. But it gets kind of crazy. So it, I mean, and then we go through the equalization process, that's also a crazy time. So the rest of the time, the people that work for me are out doing field work. So it's like they have to go gather the information and come in and it's my world.
So you would say this is not giving your department too much extra fat or extra personnel?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fiani.
Was a request for this position taken up for the current budget last year? Was a request submitted for this position?
Last year.
For the upcoming budget?
No, I don't believe. No, I don't believe so.
No, because I think your decision was.
After the fact, sorry. Yeah.
The reason I ask is because we, we would have amended this year's current budget too.
Commissioner Fiani, can you please speak into your microphone a little bit better?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, yeah, but Cindy answered that.
What's the cost for the recruiter? If that, it, it sounds like it's a niche that we're going to have to use a recruiter.
For this, and it's typically a percentage of the midpoint of the scale, so I'm trying to do quick math, I would estimate twelve thousand.
And were you here when Commissioner Gross thought that this could be a forty to fifty thousand dollar expenditure to the end of the year? Is that, is that accurate? Is he correct?
I would think probably pretty close to that.
That salary benefits both are just one. Thank you, but no. My questions or any of the questions spurred anything that the commissioners like to address or ask? In that case, we'll close the question comment period and this is going to take a roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Naka Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
No.
Commissioner Deaton.
No.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
No.
And Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to resolution number two oh, two, three, dash, oh, four, dash, oh, five, six. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with O'Donnell Electric to provide electrical services. It's brought to us by Facility Services. Can I get a motion? Proceed.
I'll move Gross.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, supported by Commissioner Deaton. Kevin, you made aware of the sheet tells us that there, the attorney has a difficulty with something?
I was not made aware, no.
Madam Secretary, do you have the, the sheet that has the attorney's concerns on that?
I don't have that. I have a, and a message from Natalie that we may need to amend this to add a fourth whereas. I'm happy to read that, but this is strictly what I have from Natalie.
Commissioner Gross.
Commissioner Gross. Madam Secretary, you've got the floor.
I'm sorry.
You have the floor, go ahead, read.
Okay. What was recommended is add as a fourth whereas, O'Donnell Electric submitted a proposal to provide electrical services per the attached itemized fee proposal in RFQU twenty-three dash zero five.
Thank you. We've, we've got a motion on the floor to adopt, but we also have a recommendation from our attorney to add that language. First of all, Kevin, do you have a difficulty?
Uh, no, I concur.
Very good.
I, I move the amended language.
Thank you. Is there a second to Commissioner Helsman? Seceded by Commissioner Domas. Let's proceed with a voice vote on that amendment. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
It's nine zero to add the amendment. Any questions or comments now that we have that amended resolution on the floor? Any questions for Director Eggleston? Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
Couple of quick ones here. O'Donnell is not our current vendor.
Correct, we do not have a current vendor.
We do not have it. And we were talking offline, but a five-year contract, we've never, I don't know if never is the right word. I don't ever recall approving a five-year vendor contract that wasn't a software maintenance or something like that. So can you tell us what our options are if things don't go well with this vendor?
Yeah, and that five-year came on a recommendation from CoPro. So I just kind of rolled with it. Typically, we do three-year contracts with a two-year renewal period. So, um, with that being said, the contract does have a out clause. And it's based on satisfactory performance. So if their performance is not satisfactory to our department's needs, then we have the ability to cancel at any moment.
Is there a monetary penalty for us canceling?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So it's, sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Domas.
It's almost like you can fire him. I mean, it doesn't sound like part of contri, you know, contract language. It's a five-year contract, and if you want me out of here, fire me. That's a lot different than saying it's a two-year contract with a two-year renewal. I'm not comfortable with a five-year contract. I think it's, it's difficult to determine what you're getting over a five-year period. Is there some reason why that's five years?
I, I'm also comfortable with going to the standard three-year with two-year renewals, if that's, would be more satisfactory.
That arrangement we have with other contractors.
The, the standard contract, just like the one that follows us up with HVAC, is currently a three-year with a two-year renewal. I went with the recommendation from our procurement company.
Commissioner Gross, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Kevin, when, when the RFP went out, was there any specificity with respect to the term of any potential contractor? Or was just asking for a quote per services?
Uh, it, it is an as-needed basis contract.
So was the GoPro people that recommended the five-year?
That's correct.
Mr. Eggleston, is there a, like a survey, or is there any way of rating their performance annually? And then can you talk about that at all?
Yeah, certainly. Once we kind of get the ball rolling and start working with them, I'd be happy to report on certainly their level of performance, their pricing. Any price increases would have to be approved. And they would recommend that moving forward. And again, it's based on their performance. So certainly I can quantify that some value for the board.
So we don't have anything established right now for our vendors as far as performance and a criteria of how well they perform. Like, this would be like response times. I think a lot of this would be towards like jails and things are going to have to happen instantly. And you'd be able to rate that, right?
Yeah, and that's correct. There are response times outlined in that contract. They have to respond within, I believe they become two hours at the emergency call service rate. That's the obligation there.
And you'd probably keep a matrix on this, and you can see how well they perform.
Yep, certainly.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
On a five-year contract, there's, there's prices, hourly costs that are quoted in this amendment. Are those hourly costs? I guess they are defined for years one through three, they're going to stay the same. And then they're, they're going to go up a little bit for years four and five. Is that correct?
That is correct. The Would like to hear from Krista about CoPro and the five-year contract.
We have a, a, a other question.
Sorry to cut you off.
What, what are we anticipating budgeting that this, you know, this is an as-needed thing, which is a new, this is a new contract. What, what is our best estimate on what this is going to cost us over the course? Likely to cost us, you know, a range of dollars, low to high, in the course of a year?
That, that I just don't know. The, the thought process here is to bring them in mostly in emergency situations. We do have tax and house that can complete electrical repairs and troubleshooting. This is more for the large-natured items, maybe items we aren't able to successfully fix. So I really, I don't know right now. But this was discussed in our yearly budget meeting with Fiscal Services Administration. There was a couple commissioners that sat in on that. So we've, we've budgeted sufficiently to estimate how much that would be. Currently, I believe we, we budget around $100,000 for as-needed services for maintenance. And that's been sufficient in past years, and that's also what we budgeted for moving forward. So certainly, if it exceeded that for any reason, you'd be well informed of that.
So the as-needed $100,000 is for electrical or HVAC or every, every outsourced emergency, is that correct?
That, that's correct. The as-needed services. So HVAC, fire suppression, and so on.
Okay, so the $100,000 is consistent with where it's been in prior years, you know, in terms of budgeting?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Domas, is there only one electrician involved here?
Uh, yes. The contract does allow us to award multiple vendors. But I would like to start with one, form a relationship, see how it works. But it does allow us to bring on another one. So we're not stuck with one person.
And rates would be the same?
The rates would be the proposed rates in their bid, I believe.
This electrician, is he a master electrician?
Yes, this is a, a company that employs master electricians, journeyman electricians. They also have some apprentice rates, I believe, in there. They're well qualified.
You've mentioned all of these possible pieces of equipment. Guy's got to be pretty savvy and has got to have a lot of experience to be able to feel comfortable around all this sort of stuff. So if he's a master electrician, that makes a big difference.
Yes.
And you're telling me that we get a master electrician for this?
Yes, yes, we do. Yep. And on an as-needed basis, again. If we can just use a journeyman electrician at that rate, I can't quite remember. There were a couple different bids where they did put the specific rates based on their classification. But yes.
So if we get a journeyman electrician, this will be a lower rate?
I believe some of them were proposed that way. I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I'd be happy to
Is a union electrician?
Yes.
What unions is in?
I, I don't know.
IBEW? In the back row?
You got Detroit, which is 58 electricians union. And you got 252 out of the And
That was my next question. But, so, all right, we'll, we'll let it go.
Well, you did have a, a good point, Commissioner, that this is when we do need that specialized service. That is exactly all I'm trying to do here. Cover our bases. When things go wrong in these large commercial buildings, you need a commercial electrician, and sometimes multiple.
Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, excuse me, if you would, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair, a question if I could.
Go ahead.
You said something about if we needed another company, that this, this contract would cover another company also? Is, is that? I didn't understand exactly what you said.
We have the ability to award multiple vendors if we so chose to.
So, so this contract is, is a kind of a overall contract that, that if you want to choose another person, you would not necessarily have to come back to us. We're approving this contract not just for this company, but for another.
No.
So any other company we brought, they would use the same contract, but we would have to approve them at that point.
That's correct. And the, the resolution I've written just specifies for O'Donnell. If I was to, for some reason, bring on another vendor to this contract, you would be able to review all the information you were given to this one, and I would need a separate approval.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further or other comment or question? Discussion? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. And we've got an amended resolution for us. Voice vote, all those that are in favor kindly say aye.
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 Opposed? None? It's a nine-zero unanimous. We're on to resolution 023-04-057. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with William E. Walter, Inc. to provide HVAC services. It's brought to us by Facility Services. May I have a motion?
So move, Helsman.
Support Gross.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Helsman, support by Commissioner Gross. This also, our attorney asked for an amendment. And I believe our secretary has it in the email from Natalie. If you would read the amendment, please.
Add as fourth whereas, William E. Walter, Inc. submitted a proposal to provide HVAC services per the attachment B. Pricing proposal as itemized in RFP 23-04.
Thank you. Director Eggleston, do you have any problem with that amendment?
I concur.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to amend?
So move, Nakagiri.
So moved by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Nakagiri. All those in favor of the amendment suggested by our attorney kindly say aye.
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 An amended resolution now. Any questions, comments, or concerns that you'd like to raise with Director Eggleston? Anything you'd like to comment or point out to us?
This is not a new contract. And the reason that this is being brought to you, this, this contract actually wasn't expired. I could renew with them for two years. But the, the problem was, was the language in the previous contract. It didn't allow the county to pursue their replacement projects and abide by, by the procurement policy. Now we've worked through that, but really, the language change adds our replacements into this contract. It gives that replacement language for like our capital projects. There's several HVAC-related projects at capital almost every single year. And I anticipate that to continue moving forward, too.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Domas.
This is with William E. Walter? Are they out of Saginaw?
They're out of Flint.
Out of Flint?
We've had a contract with them since 2015, I believe.
Do they have an office down here?
They do not, not that I'm aware of.
So all of their calls will be from their Flint facility?
Um, they're dispatched from around wherever their job site is. They do dispatch their employees directly from their houses. The sales manager is actually in Howell here, and he's our, our direct contact. So it's always worked out very nicely. And if it's, again, this is based on satisfactory performance, and they have certainly performed very well.
There's a document here, I should have seen it while we were talking about.
I, I realize that I could have answered that other question for you, yes.
There aren't any master electricians listed here?
Um, no, nope. Those, most of the employees for William E. Walter are journeyman HVAC.
No, I'm talking about the electrical.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry?
This was just handed to me.
Oh.
I should have noticed it myself.
I agree.
But we talked about master electricians and got the impression that master electricians are a part of this contract.
Of the electrical contract?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, they don't have a master electrician listed. Certainly, they have them available, though. I could provide that information to you as in their proposal. This is just the pricing proposal.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and go to a voice vote on 057. All those in favor kindly say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, eight to one is the vote.
I'm, I'm sorry, I did not, Commissioner Domas. Thank you.
We're on to resolution. You're welcome. We're on to resolution 2023-04-058. It's a resolution authorizing LETS to apply for capital funding under the fiscal year 2023, Section 5339, parent B, closed parent, bus and bus facilities discretionary grant program. Can I have a motion?
Move, Helsman. Support Gross.
Moved by Helsman, support by Commissioner Gross. Director Kellogg's here.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, commissioners. Some of you have, have considered and voted on this four times now. This is our fourth application for this very project. Third, under this particular program, the 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities Program. I, I provided a handout and a, and a report that our consultant AECOM put together to sort of summarize this better, better than I can. And it's, again, it's been, it's been discussed a lot. So I think I just, I will ask you if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I think everybody understands the, the scope of the project.
Questions, comments? Inquiries? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, I, my opinion is the same. I vote will be the same as the last time. I'm, I will not be voting in support of it. I, I do think one of the things that we need to do as a board and is to, you know, review these master plans, whether it's transit or parks or whatever. Ones, or for seniors, ones that are, in this case, twenty, this was this resolution refers to the 2019 Transit Master Plan. A, a plan that was put together, and I'm, that, where the majority of the board wasn't on there. And I just think citing something that is stale is less than ideal policy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or insight? Any other questions, comments, or insight?
Has there ever been an evaluation done on the funding for this building once it's up and running with, in conjunction with the other facility?
Um, you know, I, there is, in our last year, well, I believe all the prior applications, they did do that, and I don't have it with me, but there was a cost estimate, you know, a projection done on maintenance costs, so on and so forth. And it it was determined based on the the funding, our our formula funding, which is funding we get every year, based on, just strictly based on population, population density, that has been increasing consistently because of Livingston County's growth, and also the infrastructure law gave us about a forty percent increase in the formula funding. Point being, last year, when the analysis was done, it it was determined that we would have enough preventative maintenance funds from between the federal and state to to take care of the building and as far as maintenance goes for the foreseeable future. I don't I don't want to give you a time period. I don't I don't know if it was a ten-year timeline or or longer, but, you know, our federal apportionment, the formula dollars we receive every year only continues to go up. So I'm sure that it will it will come out the same, that that there will be ample preventative maintenance dollars to to take care of that. So, you know, it depends on the overall growth of LETS. I mean, if if, you know, I can't project where we'll be in ten years. If we have several more vehicles, then obviously our our vehicle maintenance costs will go up. But as it stands right now, everything held the the same as it is today, then then we'll have more than enough to maintain the facility. But there's a, there's a lot of variables over, you know, over time that that LETS could change, our our funding could change. I I foresee it only continuing to increase, but but you never know. So I I guess I make no guarantees, but that's that's what the analysis said last year. There's still, we're still completing the application for for this year, so I don't have that that current analysis yet.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
This is somewhat related. It seems like at the beginning of COVID, that there was a five million dollar grant that we received, or I don't remember what, and I don't ever recall us hearing what happened with that. Is that still, have we spent any of that money down? When is the end of that money? Does it have to be spent by a certain time? Do we have it in hand, or do we only get it when we actually spend it? Those are the sort of questions. Could you address?
Yes, and good question, Commissioner, and that actually would help me answer Commissioner Sample's question. So the CARES Act, it was four point nine eight million awarded in April twenty twenty. As of, as of right now, as it started and and remains, it is all in the in the Transit Operations Line Item, which is salaries, fuel, things like that. We, there's about three million remaining, to answer your question. So it's sort of been in the unwritten contingency plan for this facility. If there are cost overruns, that that could potentially be used to to meet those costs, same with maintenance costs. So there was five million to start, three million remaining. The big expenditure on that grant was the one and a half million dollar pension payment that we made in twenty twenty-one to shore up the LETS unfunded liabilities in the in the DB plan. So that was the the lion's share of of the two million that's spent, and then the other half million was actually spent in the midst of, well, in the very beginning of the pandemic, to pay for salaries when when we were in that stay-home period and and employees were getting paid. So for exactly one quarter, I used that grant to cover operating expenses. The pension payment was made in twenty twenty-one, and the rest is still there. So no, no expiration on CARES Act funds. I can request that it be used. I have not done anything to that extent yet, but I can request that it be changed to a preventative maintenance line item, any any line item, really. But the 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 reason I've been hesitant to do that is, or recommend that, is there there's never been a hundred percent operating, a grant that covers a hundred percent of operating costs until the CARES Act. Typically, our federal funds pay for fifty percent of operating expenses, and then we get roughly thirty-five percent from the state, and the rest is made up with fares and other local funds. So to have this, you know, a hundred percent federal, I've sort of been, you know, keeping it in the piggy bank, if you will, the last couple of years with all the uncertainty. Now that we're hopefully out of the woods, things are more, a little bit more stable in in the transit world. You know, that wouldn't be out of the question to to transfer it over to a different line item, so. But is it doable? Yes. Is it allowable? Yes.
So, in the back of your mind, that money would be used in conjunction with this grant?
If needed.
That would be a possible use for that money? If there's something the grant didn't cover that you thought was critical to expanding the the Grand River?
Yes, we 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 talked about it various times, the Grand River Fixed Route Service that was proposed. I mean, really, it's it's just been a safety fuse, but it can you, it could be used for, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna need to spend some of the funds eventually, but that's just one possibility, is it could be, you know, used for reserve items for this project if the grant is awarded.
So what is the end date on that other, and how would it dovetail in with this that we're talking about now?
There is no expiration, no end date on CARES Act funding, so I guess we'll, you know, depending on how long we hang on to it, we'll we'll test that, and it's, most I can tell you that the vast majority of transit agencies are well, well past their CARES Act funds. So we're, you know, we're doing, I think, the Livingston County way, if you will, and and holding on to it, so.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome. Further questions, Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, it's just a request for Director Kellogg. Could you send me a link or the document that describes the allowable and unallowable uses of the CARES Act money? Is there something online that?
There there is, Commissioner, and it's it's sort of a, I can I can answer right now. It it follows the same circular as our as our normal fifty-three oh seven funds. So all of the eligibility, you allowable uses, things like that, are are the same as our regular funds. It's just a matter of what pot it's it's in right now. I'd have to amend the grant and request that it be moved, so, but I'm happy to to do that, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other, when I I looked at, you know, one of your handouts, the supporting documentation, and it, you know, has a lot of, you know, users in that Grand River corridor. And so my question is, if those units of government that are served by the Grand River corridor wanted to start a joint authority and, you know, raise money to fund more busing, could they do that?
I, yes, I suppose so.
Would they, could they, you know, contract out to LETS for service, if you will, the buses and stuff like that?
Yeah, ju- just to be clear, you're saying a sort of consort or a group of townships, local jurisdictions along Grand River?
Yeah.
Joint, forming an authority, that they could, yes, and could they contract with LETS? I, yeah, I think so. It's, you know, we already have agreements with the several townships, so I I I don't know specifically about contracting with an entity like that, but I I think it would be considered a government unit, and as long as it is, I I think we we could.
Yeah, I offline, I will give you a call in chat to do that a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Director, I'm looking at the two thousand nineteen Transit Plan that you quote, and at page eleven, it talks about a new operations center. And back in two thousand nineteen, the estimated cost was six million to seven million, and a local share of fifty-six thousand. Has that local share gone up?
It's actually gone away, if you believe that, and that's because, first of all, that that cost estimate, there are two separate projects in that plan. There was a satellite facility, which I believe is what you're referencing, and then there is a hub for for connections. I don't remember the number of that, but it's it's in there somewhere. We sort of combined the two, and if you take the cost estimate range for both of those and put them together, it's, I think it's roughly ten million, so we just combined two of those projects into one location. Sorry, I'm sorry, what was the second?
Local share.
Oh, local share. So that was done based on our funding apportionment in twenty eighteen, when the pa- and when the plan was completed. It's, as I was just speaking about, it's gone up significantly. So we, I believe the assumption at that time was that there wouldn't be enough grant funds to cover all of the costs, the ongoing costs. Well, there there is now at this point in time. Again, everything else equal with LETS, if nothing, you know, if we don't have any big costs for any reason, then then we would be able to cover it without any local share.
How many square feet were you planning on building when you decided, once you identified and got a site?
I haven't gotten into that level of detail. I, we may have, there may have been a square foot adjustment in the in last year's application. I apologize, I don't have that with me, but I believe the proposal was for an acre and a half, and then there would be a garage, some office space, and then the bus shelter area. So it's, you know, I could tell you that the footprint is roughly an acre and a half, the square footage of the building. I'm I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I could tell you, our our current garage is probably a good reference point, which is eighteen thousand square feet in in just the garage. So that's, that's part of it, and the office space, as I mentioned last meeting, would be not nearly what we have now, because we we won't need that much office space. Yep.
When you say doing it the Livingston County way, that means that some of the things in this plan would probably be off the table, like a millage?
Yeah, and that's, as I mentioned, Commissioner Drake, that that was a recommendation for a possible funding mechanism of of several, and, you know, I I have no plans, that that's not in my plans, is is the bottom line, so.
And what would be built at the hub?
The hub is the whole thing. It's the it's the garage, office space, and the the reason it's a hub is the the transfer center. I don't know if you've ever been to, oh, off the top of my head, Grand Rapids has a is a pretty big one. It's just a sheltered area where buses pull in, let folks off. There's, you know, wa- waiting area, and then then the buses kind of pull through, so.
Got it. Thank you. Have we tried for this grant before?
Uh, this is the third time for this grant, and I've been getting debriefs from from DOT after each one, and we've we've continued to make progress. So there's, I think, six categories that they rate, that they rate each project on. We started off with, I think, four that were highly recommended, two that were just recommended. Last, last year, we were highly recommended for in every category, but so were forty or fifty other transit agencies or projects nationwide. So it's it's just a matter of persistence, showing community support, and and just keep trying to tweak it until, you know, until it it stands out. So, and and when I say keep trying, it it is a consideration of theirs, whether you've been awarded this funding or not. So the longer we're not awarded, I I think eventually maybe we will be, so that's, you know, that that's just my speculation, but I I have been getting debriefs after each each time, so.
Have you looked into finding a used building someplace that you could turn into this?
That came up at General Government, Commissioner, and it would just, it would have to be a pretty specific building to to, you know, fit the fit the use that we're we're looking for. I mentioned that, you know, there's lots of vacant big box stores that I don't think would would be, would work unless you completely renovate the the place. And Commissioner Helsnerman, I I think, half jokingly mentioned if the if the Brighton Bus Garage, you know, was vacated and went up for sale, would that be a maybe a reasonable option? Yes, but I don't know of any bus garages for sale or anything like that. So it would just have to be a pretty, pretty specific building.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I think Director Kellogg knows I've I've been on him a little bit to update the nineteen plan, and I think by completing this application, I'm I'm supportive of this. I think that kind of becomes the updated plan by default. The, the one thing we never seem to talk about when it comes to public transportation, we talk about our aging population. We have, we have, every month, we have multiple people coming in here and begging us for an expansion of LETS. But we never talk about the potential economic benefit, and that that's a real thing, and I would not underestimate that. We have a, in addition to our aging population, we have a unique situation in our younger people where they don't drive. They don't have their licenses, and they can't get to work. They're still in mom and dad's basement or whatever, but it's a it's a really odd phenomenon where, you know, my kids couldn't wait to get their license and get out of the house. There's a, there's a unique situation where this younger generation, they're very hesitant to get their license. Why do I want to do that? What do I need it for? And so I think these kind of opportunities that come up that cost the county almost nothing, I I think we need to at least explore them. We may not have to accept the grant, but we at least need to explore them, because we're going to have some unique economic challenges going forward.
Commissioner, if I could real quick speak to, and and thank you for that, and I could, I mean, I could cite statistics all day long, and I I definitely won't, so, but but as far as the the plan, so what I gave you is an attachment to this was my best, you know, quick update on twenty nineteen versus now as far as the need for the facility. That's why I had them redo the the analysis, the trip analysis that shows the distribution. And, you know, fifty-five percent of of the trips we did in that particular month, and then it was November of twenty-two, fifty-five percent were east of, in in the eastern half of the county. So I I asked the our consultant to u- update the most relevant parts of the plan, and that's that's what you see. I guess if if you're looking for a wholesale, completely new study, then then then, you know, that's, please reach out to me, because I that that is a very, you know, it took us about a year to do that plan. Typically, those kinds of big studies are, you know, once, once every ten years, maybe, or slightly less. But if that's what's being asked of me, we can certainly do that, and I can request funding for it. So so my my attempt was to answer some questions that came up last year, and so that's why, that's why that was in there.
I, if I can just respond that, yeah, I know, and I I appreciate that, and I was not asking for a full revamp of the nineteen plan, just.
Just just that kind of updated data really helps. Commissioner Deaton.
Director Kellogg, thank you for taking my calls over the last couple of weeks, and we see you made a great tour of the facility that we have currently. I have some comments, I guess, and I wanted just to kind of clarify maybe some of the conversations that we discussed was, you know, we're looking for something over on the east side of the county, you know, due to growth. And if this grant, I'm in favor of it, I think that it's a good thing to, you know, get money from the government to expand and help our systems here. But I'm always looking at it like, well, if they're going to give us something, what's it going to cost taxpayers? And I don't know if we discussed, you know, the long term FTEs and also the maintenance costs and stuff on a new building like that. So is that something you can comment on?
So again, I'm going back to, I think it was Commissioner Sample. There is an analysis on maintenance costs that I can't quote off the top of my head. But again, if if everything was the same except for this building with LETS, the same number of vehicles, same number of FTEs, it would still benefit the residents of the county, I think, to have have it split. I mean, we're way over in Howell Township. It's just not the best. And I, you know, I hesitate to even say this, but because I think LETS would and the county's residents would benefit from both locations. If I had to pick one or the other, I'd pick Brighton. I mean, that was done out of convenience because the county owned the airport. And, you know, it was a reasonable place to to build a facility. It's just to have over half of our ridership on the opposite end of the county. It's 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 not the most efficient thing in the world. So but I think having a, you know, splitting the staff and vehicles could could be doable. I think there's going to be some just organic growth that happens over the next 10 years with with the aging of the county. So. But I don't think it's going to be a direct result of this facility. It's going to be a result of of the the need increasing, if you will. So. And I, just one final comment on that. I've I've said this, I probably every time I've brought this application forward, is that these Congress has already appropriated the funds for these grant programs. If if Livingston County doesn't get a $10 million grant, that that those funds aren't going to go back to the Treasury. They're going to be spent on transit, but somewhere else, probably the big agencies that suck up most of the money, like New York and LA and Chicago and Detroit in our state. So. That's just, you know, my my goal is to to bring the funds home to our our county and put them to work here. So that's that's just my comment on that, but.
Thank you. Seeing no further. Signals to comment or question, we'll close that portion and go to. Vote, and this will be a plain voice vote. All those in favor of resolution ending 058 to apply for the grant kindly say aye. All those opposed?
May.
It's an eight to one passage. We're now at 202304-059. It's a resolution approving the updated LETS vehicle accessibility plan. Brought to us by LETS again. Director Kellogg, do you have any further comment?
I move the resolution.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So this is, the vehicle accessibility plan is sort of the state's way of making sure that we are playing by the rules of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have to fill out a abbreviated version of this every year as part of our annual application for state funding. The the full plan that I included a draft of has not been updated since 2005 because MDOT has not requested it since then. They tell us that they're going to now do it every five years. We're going to be required to update the plan every five years. So this, the the draft that you see in in front of you was approved by MDOT. It also has to be approved by the the group, the LAC, you probably noticed in there, the Local Advisory Council, which is a volunteer group that exists pretty much strictly to monitor. You know, keep keep track of LETS's service, how we provide service to the disabled and senior community. So I think, as most of you are aware, a majority of our passengers are senior or disabled. So it's it's sort of an advisory group. We take, we have quarterly meetings, take comments on ways we can improve our service for people with disabilities and seniors. They they have to approve the abbreviated version we do every year, and they have to approve this full plan too, as well as the Board of Commissioners. So. That's that's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions.
You meant today?
You know, the good catch, we I postponed it until next Tuesday. Just I I thought it would be better to have one approval out of the way before we're addressing the other, so. Yep.
With a question, comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion and go to a vote, a voice vote. All those in favor of 059, kindly say yes or aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero is the vote. It's unanimous. Moving into 022304-060. It's a resolution authorizing the creation of eight irregular part-time driver positions for LETS. Director Kellogg. After a motion and second.
I'll move Gross.
Or move by Gross, Commissioner Gross, supported by Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you. So again, this is sort of not a lot of change from from what we do now to the irregular part times. We have eight temporary positions that are currently filled, and these folks typically work just like it says, irregular shifts, weekends, summers only, things like that. You know, they're limited to a certain number of hours a week, so they they fill in as subs for our permanent drivers. And what we've run into with our with our temps is the one-year time limit. Actually, one of those eight is now up against that one-year time limit. That's what prompted this. But on the recommendation of HR, we I just decided that we would, you know, convert those from temporary to irregular part-time. The only budgetary impact is that once they are on this, it's a permanent position, so they're eligible for step increases annually. But for this year, there would be no change in the budget. We plan to use them the same as as we are currently using them as temps, so.
Questions, analysis, comment, commissioners? So I'm hearing no budget impact 2023, but the impact comes in 2024 when the step increase might be there for one, two, or three?
Right, well, they, assuming all eight are still with us and they're, you know, eligible, they do a good job, which is, you know, required for the annual increase, then then all of them would at some point next year. But it's, you know, eight, eight, eight people going up one, one step. So not a not a huge impact. There will be some. I would, I wouldn't know the exact numbers until budget time, or I I'm sure I could get a a projection, but it's probably not very significant, so.
10,000. Not very significant. 20,000. A late.
Yeah, I think that, so what is the, what would be the impact of, you know, several grade, grade three moving up a step within that grade? That's I can't say off the top of my head.
Just an FYI, we cannot hear you on Zoom.
It'll be in the budget projections that we'll look at later this year for next year. Thank you. It'll be in the budget stuff. Any other or further questions, comment, analysis? That portion sounds closed. We'll go into a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Druck.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fiani. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item number 2023-04-061. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Airport Zoning Board of Appeals. Brought to us by Board of Commissioners. May I have a motion?
I'll move it, Helsnerman.
Thank you.
Sample.
Motion by Helsnerman, support by Sample. Would we look to Mr. Swant or Director Swanson because it's airport, or would I look to somebody in the room?
I have, I have some information on this. This is.
Proceed.
This is a position that is filled by statute or by resolution by the person on the Planning Commission. And it's Margaret Burkholder is the latest person that we put on the Planning Commissioner. And the Planning Commission apparently is has picked her to be this representative. So. It couldn't be too many other people. And the Planning Commission is one that picks the person, so we're we're agreeing with them on this.
Thank you. True. Any questions, comments, or objections directed to Commissioner Helsnerman? Seeing none, the discussion is closed. We'll move into vote. This is a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, it's a nine to zero unanimous passage. We're at resolution 2023-04-062. It's a resolution approving an appointment to Livingston County Human Services Collaborative Body. May I have a motion?
Remove Gross, support Smith.
Motion by Gross, support by Commissioner Smith. Any analysis, questions, comments? It appears to be straightforward that Andrew Hickock is the non-for-profit member they wish to have appointed to their executive committee. Term expiring 9/30/2023. Questions, comment? I have Commissioner Nakagiri.
Thank you. I just, this is just a comment. I mean, I'll I'll vote for the gentleman, but in the future, it would be, and I'll chat with administration that, you know, I'm not, I don't know who the guy is, you know, it would be nice for the House of Information on who he is. I mean, we didn't get any information on the on the one we just approved, but I know who Margaret Burkholder was. She went, you know, she was recently vetted. But, you know, we we don't have a say in who gets nominated, but we have a say in who gets, you know, voted on. And, you know, there's nothing, there's no resume, there's no history, there's no indication of which, you know, organization you worked for. So it's, it's, I I see that this is a short-term appointment. It must be filling something temporarily because the term expires on in September of '23. So it's not a big deal, but in the future, I just, I don't think it's a good practice to be voting on people we that that I know nothing, that I don't want to vote on somebody I don't I know nothing about, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Helsnerman.
We have a commissioner that that serves on this Human Services Collaborative Body, do we not? Who's the, who's that commissioner? Is there more than one? So I would.
Yes.
Yeah, so so I would think that we would. The people on that board would give us an idea about Andrew, you know, or why they were, why he was picked, or. So do we have any, you know, and part of the, I agree with Chairman Nakagiri. Part of the reason that we had, we revamped the way that we pick these people was to avoid somebody coming to the board and nobody here has reached out to this person with a phone call, to my knowledge, or for an email, or to say thank you for serving, or thank you for considering, or, you know, how long have you lived in the county? You know, do you believe in aliens, you know, or, you know, people from our, you know? And I'm joking about that, but we we don't know. We've not had the first conversation, and maybe, maybe we. If somebody knows this person.
No, and I don't. I I simply wanted to reaffirm Commissioner Nakagiri's thoughts, and I think we asked this last year on a couple of these, where if you would please include a something that tells us, you know, some background on the person and why they're qualified to be on the board, or what the intention of the nominating committee was to put him on. So.
Chairman, I may apologize to my colleagues that at the last HSBC meeting, I happened to be out of town and missed the meeting, so I, this is news to me. Sorry.
Okay.
There is a little bio on the back of that, backside of the resolution. But I would think that in appearance before this board would be appropriate somewhere along the line, whether it's at a committee or here at the board, wherever. Be sure, sure it'd be nice if we met this guy walking down the street and we said hello Fred, or whatever your name is. We're on the same team. But I would, I would expect that would be an appropriate way to go. Have Commissioner Nakagiri.
I I'm going to make a motion to postpone the vote on this until we get more information regarding the candidate. So that's, that's, I'm making that motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Commissioner Nakagiri with second and support by Commissioner Smith that we postpone for more information. Is there a deadline to get the information by?
Hopefully, we'd have it before our next meeting, but, you know, I mean, it's.
Okay.
So I mean, this is not, I'm not saying postpone indefinitely. We are postponing till we get the information, so.
Before the next Board of Commissioners.
Yeah.
Meeting.
You know, I saw that a concern, I just share this with my colleagues because everybody here probably knows my opinion on DEI. So what if we find out that this nominee was, you know, the manager of diversity, equity, and inclusion for a nonprofit? I would not be in favor of the person that believes in that philosophy representing any element of Livingston County government. That's just my opinion.
And Secretary, the next Board of Commissioners meeting for an exact date? Have you that information? April 24th. Yep. Ask the Chair of the Personnel Committee to head up this search.
I will, I will get involved in the acronym free zone. I will, I will check into this.
Are you suggesting that you'll be the person that contacts the Human Services Collaborative Body to let them know about postponement?
I might start with contacting the person on the commission that's on that board.
I might start with contacting the person on the commission that's on that board.
Okay.
And see where he goes with that and then have him report back to me, and then I will report back to you.
Really?
Right.
I'll give you a ride over there. Wherever it is.
But we'll get it handled. Me and Jay will be on point for that.
Okay, I see no more need to question or comments on closing that portion. We'll go to the motion to postpone for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing for more information before the next Board of Commissioners meeting on four twenty-four twenty-three kindly say aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposition? That is a nine zero vote passes to postpone for that date and time. We're now on item number twelve, accounts payable reports, A, claims dated April eleven two thousand and twenty-three, and B, payables dated March eighteen through March thirty-first two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve both.
Support.
Commissioner Gross moves to support, moves to pay both, and Commissioner Helserman supports with a second. All those in favor?
Comment if I could, please.
You may comment.
There's two million dollars roughly paid out to our Huron Metro Parks. Our you our yearly contribution from the county your hard-earned tax dollars being sent to to Huron Metro Park, so. Enjoy it when you go, you paid for it.
And incidentally some of you might not have signed those documents on the counter over there, it wouldn't if you drift by, stop and put your signature on it.
Thank you. Voice vote?
Or I'm going to forge your name on.
Secretary, not a row. Where's the chair?
There I am. Where's my hammer?
Thank you. All those in favor, voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair here is nine to zero. Last call to the public. It's a two-minute max. Is there anyone in the room that would like to talk to the commission? Under call to the public, looking for anybody in the room first.
I'd like one thing, Jay, you could ask.
Can you please go to the microphone?
Yeah, I'm Edwinias. I had forty years in the building trades, Labor's Union, Carpenter Millright Union. My question is, does the county, unless things has changed, I retired in oh eight. Let's things has changed, anytime you have any government work, I believe it used to be five thousand or more. Government means any municipality where taxpayers' money is spent. It's supposed to be a sealed bid, competitive bid. Otherwise, you bid apples to apples. If it's for electrical work, you name what type of conduit, what type of wire. If it can be aluminum mixed or whatever, if fasteners, spikes or whatever, in same as in drywall. And but it's apples to apples bid, and it's a sealed bid. And when you talk prevailing wage, and by the way, this state, wrong, right, or indifferent, and I'm in favor of it, the worker should be paid union or non-union a prevailing wage. The only thing that a kind, a user or a contractor bidding work can beat up on is the worker. If they're specked out for the material to be specked, every contractor bidding, whatever type of work it is, is specked out. The only thing he can beat up on is using a wage. That's where Davis Bacon come from. By the way, that was Senator Bacon and Senator Davis in his thirties, and they were both Republicans. Then we come to Mini Davis Bacon, Public Act one six six was copied. And the point I'm leading you to, when you put something out to bid, I believe it's a five thousand dollar or greater, it has to be public bid, otherwise it it can't be just you and you are going to bid my project. Don't work that way. You guys are heading for trouble if that's what you're doing business. End of story. I'm just telling you that.
We are the one. Any other people, any other persons in the room? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, I forgot this in my reports, but I noticed there was a grant opportunity that's being afforded to all units of government from the state of Michigan that would help shore up your pension fund if your pension fund was lower than sixty percent funded. So it falls into the category of no good deed goes unpunished. Because, I mean, here here's one of our biggest, you know, focuses to, you know, get our shore up, and maybe we should have just waited a while. So anyway, it's um, in spite of that, I think we still did the right thing in in shoring up ours and and but obviously, I'm not, there's the folks in Lansing see it differently, so anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no one else in the room with their hand up. Who do we have on our Zoom?
We have Lori Cohen.
Ms. Cohen, can you hear me? You have the floor.
Yep, thank you. This will be quick, and it's Lori Cohen. And I just wanted to touch on the negative comments that were made about Representative Conlin at the first call to the public. Just wanted to say that my experience with Jennifer Conlin has been only positive. She's very accessible and willing to listen, and she's very much involved in Livingston County, not just Ann Arbor Estate. She recently held a town hall in Hamburg and has plans to have many more. Thank you.
You're welcome. And for any other person on Zoom that might raise their hand or somehow indicate they want to participate in call to the public. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda. And may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move, Helserman.
Or Nakagiri.
Moved by Helserman, support by Nakagiri. All those in favor kindly say aye. Any opposed? Nine to zero, the chair claims and details that it passed.